All right, it's seven o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. May we have a roll call, Karen, please?
Commissioner Keen.
Here.
Commissioner Batty.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Brink.
Here.
Commissioner Black.
Here.
Vice Chair Young.
Here.
And Chair Langus.
Present. Thank you, Karen. We ask that all those in attendance stand and join us in our nation's pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next is to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No? Motion carries. Agenda's approved. Next on the agenda is to approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes from June 12th of 2019.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to table this item since the minutes were not in our packet.
There's a motion.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second to table. Tabled. These motions are non-debatable. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No? Motion's tabled to the next meeting. Thank you, Susan. Next on the agenda is the conditional use permit for 9525 North Shore Trail North. And the way this will work tonight is the staff will report the position of their recommendation. Commission will ask questions of staff if there are any. We'll then allow the applicant to come up and say their piece or add anything that staff may have missed. Commission may have questions. We'll then open a public hearing where anyone in the public can come up and say whatever they feel on this topic, and then we'll bring it back to the commission for a decision. Donovan, can you kick us off?
Sure. Chair, members of the Plan Commission, I'd like to present the conditional use permit application for 9525 North Shore Trail. This is a application that came as a direct result of some zoning text amendment recommended and approved by City Council in the fall of 2017. In this case, it involves a non-recurring lot in the Third Lake. And this is just adjacent to the home where the Swansons, who are here in attendance, the applicants, live at 9525 North Shore Trail. And in this case, requirements for building accessory structure without a principal structure, according to the zoning code, is that be located in this, basically a second-tier lot in a single-family zoning district, within 100 feet of the house lot. That it be under 800 square feet in size, that it meet the required side and rear yard structure setbacks for accessory structures, as well as a front yard setback for principal structures. And in this case, as shown in the submitted survey, we have that. We have on both the south side, the adequate setback, and north side as well. The structure size is 792 square feet, 22 by 36. The submitted elevation show less than 10-foot sidewall height. And the appropriate surface is calculated 15.6 percent for this lot. There's a single driveway proposed for access from North Shore Trail. The property slopes steeply in the rear. Retaining wall is proposed to create a more secure building pad. Also, the structure does meet that 30-foot minimum setback. And this was currently vacant lot. And this is actually, in my mind, was one of the reasons why I thought this zoning text amendment would really help, is that so that applicants who want to store larger things, larger than perhaps the existing buildings could allow, in this case boats, they have an option. And the city engineer did review and wanted to ensure that proper drainage is occurring, mostly so that there be a shallow swale installed along here, and also to not have water, I'm sorry, shallow swale here, not have stormwater sheet flow across North Shore Trail, or else be directed in a way that goes to the rear of the lot. Staff recommendation is for approval with three conditions relating to meeting the city engineer's concerns, stormwater not adversely impacting the public road or neighboring properties, and that all required comfort lake, forest, and watershed district permits be obtained prior to construction activities. With that, I'm happy to take any questions from the Plan Commission.
Donovan, I want to summarize one other piece, too, and I know you weren't at the neighborhood meeting, but there was a neighborhood meeting held. Commissioner Brink and myself were there, along with staff intern. And the summary for the rest of the commission, there was several neighbors, I want to say it was three or four neighbors that were in attendance. I don't know that there was a single concern voiced about this specific project. Most of them were more interested in having their own garage built on similar adjacent properties. So that's kind of the summary of the neighborhood meeting.
Thank you.
Were there questions of staff? No? Does the applicant? I'm sorry.
Ms. Chairman.
Commissioner Batty?
Donovan, I'm looking at this grading plan here. I think this lot is big enough to grade properly, but this doesn't do me a whole lot of confidence that it's going to get graded properly with this drawing with these arrows on it. They really don't, you know, to get water to run a certain way and not run onto the adjacent property, you have to create swales. And I don't see any swales or anything on here. I just see arrows pointing in a direction, and I don't think there's enough. There's a problem, I think, somewhere if either the spot elevations on the, this plan here are incorrect, or the contour elevation, or the contour markers, they don't line up. And I'm just, if this is 920, if indeed the elevation right smack down the middle of the site looks like there's a 920 contour, and it shows here that the proposed garage floor is at 931, 11 feet above that, something is not right with this drawing here. I'm not going to, somebody made a mistake someplace. This clearly isn't correct.
There is a lot of slope on the property, and I can see where the, Donovan, what contours are those? They're not 10-foot contours, are they?
They're two-foot.
Yeah, then that's got to be seriously an error. I am concerned that, especially on the north side, it looks like some of your arrows are going to be draining onto the property to the north. On the west, you've got drainage down the proposed driveway. My guess is that will also drain some of the garage roof, and that would drain back out on the north shore, which is already a challenging area. And then on the south side, you've got the drainage arrows going into the retaining wall, which isn't going to be helpful for your garage unless you build that retaining wall with significant drainage through it. I realize it doesn't seem like it would have a lot of water on it, but it is what it is. So I would like, as this goes forward, when they come in for building permits, to make sure that a solid grading plan is reviewed by the city engineer.
Would you agree with me that there is something wrong here with these elevations?
I don't see the 920 that you're referring to.
Just approximate the middle of the site, front to back.
Right there.
There's a vertical contour, a contour that runs right straight across there. That looks like that's 920 to me.
Right.
Okay. And 10, what, 10, 12 feet away is the back of the garage with the floor at 931. That would mean that would be 11 feet above that elevation. Something's not right.
Well, I mean, obviously, this 931 is a proposed elevation.
I think I filled the site. I mean, they're...
Well, it looks like the base of the wall is at 924, though.
Also, I think this is something that the builder who's present can address, as well as, a lot of this does relate to final grading, which the inspector, you know, city inspector does review. And as well as, you know, some of this related to the grading plan is what I do send to Ryan during the building permit application phase.
So has he reviewed this?
Yeah, he reviewed it, yeah. And he said that his main concern was...
Green.
There'd be a, you know...
Okay, so we're not alone.
A swale to drain stormwater. I mean, we see many, many types of drainage plans. Some do have those spot elevations that show very clearly the direct, the water flow.
I would live with, I could live with spot elevations, but this is just arrows.
We have some numbers there.
New numbers? The only new number I can see is the floor elevation of the proposed garage.
Well, I believe that there's a 930.6 and 930.7, which would be directing water on the upper left corner.
Oh, clear up there, okay.
That do direct water toward the rear, which is the preferred direction here.
Well, the other problem, Donovan, is that if these are two-foot contours, then all of the contours aren't shown on the drawing. I don't mean to be picky here, but, I mean, 930 is the road, essentially out at the road there is the 930 contour, and then no other contours show up until, I mean, it looks like, is this another 930 contour? Okay, so then all of a sudden, these things just racehorse down the hill. Okay, I see it, all right. I stand corrected. So this is the 930 contour right here as well, then?
Right through the middle of the garage.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so that's why that's at 931.
There is a lot of slope to this property.
Yeah, but the elevations don't show any, you know, they don't show, you're almost going to have to dig a basement under this sucker to make it work.
Storage.
Are there other questions of staff? Okay. Does the applicant have any words? If you could come up, just state your name and anything that you'd like to add.
Hello. Jim Vale, Vale Builders. The grade of the arrows was just pointing the direction of which the slope is going. That was just so you could see it in reference of what direction it's flowing. As far as the elevation goes, yes, we are planning to put a full, almost full basement, but there are alterations. Right now, we're just trying to get approval. The other one is, which I would submit in when I get the permit, is we could do a grade beam with helicopiers that go down. A grade beam is actually a structured footing that's 16 inches wide, two feet tall, and you do helicopiers that go based on soil conditions. Could go up to, I've done some going 40 feet. And then we form those around the grade beam, and then from there, we put our block wall up. The grade beam is what it states, it's at grade, doesn't even go farther below. The helicopiers actually support the weight and the lift and the lateral bracing for it. They don't move. I've solved many frost problems for people that had issues by putting in grade beams. And what it does is, it doesn't affect us where we have to go super deep to hit a soil condition or whatnot to get what we need to support the building. And some of the areas we've done around, you know, just even an entire slab where they have frost and clay, we pour grade beams along and put the helicals in, and we tie the foundation in. We put some squash blocking of cardboard gussets underneath that allows some expansion, and their concrete never moves again. It makes for great situations, and these are some of the things that I would, I go to my little civil engineer, and he designs up a sketch for what I need to do, and I base which ones more economical, whether I'm going to do 11 courses in the back and work my way up, or if I'm going to do a grade beam with helicals down in the rear. And it really comes down to all will be good. The slope, as far as we do the grading, your main goal is to get it so it doesn't, one, we don't want it washing onto the neighbors, which is actually pretty level with the neighbors, and they all slope off right to the rear. As you can see, the only issue I think we have is how we're going to do the structure to support it, is what I feel. And I would be very well submit whatever you need to do that, so that we get a permit and approvals and so. As far as the markings, the survey company put in is just showing the existing elevations and how they're sloping towards the rear, so that they're not encroaching, going towards the lake and affecting the water. So that's what that's referencing.
So are those retaining walls there now, or is that something that's going to be put in?
That's something we're proposing to put in to eliminate a lot of runoff too quickly to lessen the steepness just behind. And then the retaining wall, we're not going to go much, it's not going to, so we don't have to have a real engineer. I don't want to have it going more than four feet, because otherwise, we've got to go through an engineering part of it and get it all schematized out. And it's basically just to even ease the flow, the dirt to the rear, take away extra soil, which we don't want to happen. So that's why we kind of...
So are you going to bring Phil in, then, or how are you going to get it up to that level?
A lot of the frost footing's going to be coming out. There's going to be actually a lot we can use. We actually will probably be taking some from the driveway, too. We've got to go at least four to six inches, eight inches down, which has got to go to the back, and to put in the driveway, because we can't just lay it right on top. So if you measured out that square footage, it's actually greater than the amount that we're, we might even have to haul some away by the time we're done.
Are there other questions of the applicant? Ms. Keon?
Mr. and Mrs. Swanson, are you aware that the driveway, the driveway to your existing home, is not in compliance with the rules of the city, both in terms of its width at the street and with the setbacks on the side?
They made us aware of that at the meeting last week, but we bought our house at the end of last summer, as it was. We had no idea of anything until we went through a meeting that anything was wrong there.
Okay. Oftentimes, when someone is asking for a conditional use permit or a variance or something else, the city takes that opportunity to fix past errors. And since you will be having driveway space on the other side of the road, would you be willing to go ahead and fix the problems with the driveway by narrowing it so that it is in compliance with the side setbacks and the 30-foot width at the street?
Yeah, we would be, sure.
All right. Thank you.
Are there other questions of the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll open up the public hearing. So this is an opportunity for anyone in the public to come up. I'll ask you to state your name and your address, and then you can say whatever you wish on this application. So we'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak?
Can I ask a question about our driveway, whatever? How much do we need to remove? Is that something we talk about later, or we're not familiar with, you know, that it's, again, too wide or whatever?
Mr. and Mrs. Swanson, we can talk about that later.
Okay, sure, real good. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission.
For purposes of discussion, I'm going to move that we approve this conditional use permit with the recommendations, meeting the recommendations of the staff and the city engineer, making sure, adding a condition for, that upon review of the building permit, the drainage plan be reviewed by the city engineer, and that the existing driveway on the, that'd be the west side of North Shore Trail, be modified to meet proper city requirements. That would be the 30-foot maximum at the street and the five-foot setbacks on either side. So that would be five conditions overall.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion?
So Donovan, is Ryan going to write, I mean, there's no written report on this from Ryan. He usually is.
No, no. In the review, engineering review paragraph, I basically, you know, accurate a stetographer and wrote down his comments.
Okay, that's fine. I was curious, because most of the time, there's a letter with his signature and whatever you want it.
All right, I think, I'll note on Susan's comments, it was one of the questions I had early on in this process as well. And I think it is important for North Shore Trail to have less access points and less width for the safety of its long-term design when it's redone. And so I do think that's a good measure, and I'll support that that's added. I do live right around the corner from here, not close enough where I need to abstain, but enough where I'm familiar with the property. And it is very flat in the front, along with about four other properties, so I would honestly not be surprised if we got other proposals similar to this in the near future. So I think this is precedent-setting, but I'm comfortable with it. And that's kind of my only comment. Unless there's anyone else, we'll call it. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No? Abstain? Motion carries. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before we proceed...
Yes?
I'd just like to comment to the staff that good job on this. I think this ordinance amendment was one that was needed, and I think you're very creative and did a good job creating this, an ordinance amendment to allow this to happen. Good job.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number seven, minor subdivision application, 23964 Atasca Avenue. It'll take a similar process as the last one, so if you're nodding yes, I'm going to assume you kind of understand that process. And we'll just kick it off with Donovan.
I'd like to present the minor subdivision of 20, property addressed, currently addressed as 23964 Atasca. And this is currently a parcel approximately 21 acres in size. And what's proposed, and shown here in the yellow, approximately at the northern border of the city, what's proposed is to create two lots, one which there's a house upon and one which is currently vacant. A small piece of this is that in order to create a legal lot having the 300-foot minimum lot width, there's a lot line adjustment where some land is traded with a neighboring parcel in order to get this, the minimum width on Inwood Avenue. So both parcels are of, you know, required minimum acreage as well as minimum lot width. And also part of this, they're creating a new lot. We wanted to also have a drainage utility easement dedicated to mimic the Atasca Acres subdivision, as well as provide that ability for the drainage utilities to be located There's a park dedication fee of $2,500 for each new lot, or the fee as it's, is when the, I'm sorry, the deeds are recorded. And that there's no denial, no criteria to deny the minor subdivision that I see. And this is a recommendation to council for this type of application. And the staff recommendation is for a Plan Commission recommendation to City Council of approval, with four conditions that relate to billing permit, which shall be obtained prior to any improvements made on the new parcel, and the new deed shall be recorded for the adjacent lot to confirm there's no net decrease in size, since that is a legal non-conforming lot within this area, has a five-acre lot minimum. And all concerns, the city engineer must be addressed prior to the issuance of the billing permit, and the parking dedication fee needs to be paid prior to approving deeds for recording. At this time, I have to take any questions from the Plan Commission.
Donovan, I had addressed on an email, and Erin actually said there was a correction in the staff recommendation. Number two, the address says 2379 at the one I'm looking at on the screen, in the original one that was posted online.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That was corrected and put on the second one, but I just want to make sure for the record, we have the correct deed that's going to be required here.
Yeah, I just pulled this out of the...
Can you state what that address is?
That address is 23789 Inwood Avenue.
All right. I just wanted to make sure we had it right, so we weren't requiring them to get a deed on somebody else's property. Were there other questions of staff? Commissioner Young?
Donovan, has the land swap been recorded, been consummated and recorded with the county?
No, no, that'll be done, you know, on, they'll be done on the condition of this approval, you know, when it occurs.
So there really should be a fifth condition, that the land swap be recorded, be completed and recorded before this is completely approved. In other words, what I don't want to happen is for us to say, yes, we're going to approve this subdivision. And things get put off, especially if they're on the bottom stack of my dining room table. But things get put off, and I don't want it to be put off so that multiple, many years from now, it's, oh, my goodness, this is a non-conforming lot that was never done.
Oh, okay, so there's a 120-day, you know, shelf expiration date for these type of approvals. And so that the applicant has to come in with the deeds, you know, with legal descriptions that match... legal descriptions that match what's here, you know, for parcel one and parcel two, you know, at that time, and we could, you know, do this, you know, consequent, consecutively, record that, you know, the, you know, approve this one first, but they have to be, I mean, the legal descriptions have to match what's, what's, what council approves, so that, I mean, we won't create a, I don't understand how we could create a.
If the land swap does not occur, then there would be a non-conforming lot. If the, because the land swap is, is critical to making sure that you have two conforming lots, correct?
Right, well, that would be the third deed that's involved here, and if it wasn't approved, it would basically put that little strip, you know, you know, some section in limbo, because it would, you know, we would.
Right.
Be recording the parcel two land.
And I don't want it to be in limbo.
Yeah.
So that's why I want to make sure that the land swap is recorded.
So is it simply a modified condition two, that the, the new deed shall be recorded prior to?
That the land swap shall be recorded and, and the new, and the new deed, yes. This has happened elsewhere in our city in the past. It's more prevalent with variances, that there's an understanding that a variance, either for access or utility or water, was obtained, but it was never recorded, and it gets lost in the midst, mists of time. Thank you.
Are there other questions of staff? Would the applicant like to come up and say anything or present anything additional
Hi, my name is Tara Schultz, and I live at 23964 Itasca, and I am the applicant. And, yeah, we have a 20-acre piece of property that we would like to split into two pieces, so for the sale of our home with 10 acres, and then to have the vacant lot for future use for a future home for ourselves. So I know there's a lot line adjustment, and there's a minor subdivision happening at the same time. We, it was recommended we did it, do it all at the same time, so that's what we did. We also have our surveyor here, Kelly Jordan, from Woodseth, that can answer any questions as well. Do you have any questions for me?
Are there questions of the applicant?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll open up the public hearing, just like the last one. Any member of the public, we would ask you that can come up to the podium and state your name and address, and tell us what you want to say. So, public hearing is now open. Anyone like to speak? You don't have to do it all at once. We'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for a recommendation to council.
So you want a fifth condition on you?
No, Donovan added it to the modified two.
Commissioner Young?
Mr. Chair, I am going to move approval of the minor subdivision application, subject to the revised condition number two regarding the recording of the land swap. Period.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion?
I was, just want to make sure this wasn't a chicken or the egg thing on this recording stuff. Are you comfortable, Donovan, with this here?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right. I'm not wringing my hands over it, I just, just wanted to make sure.
Other discussion? All right, we'll call the question. All those in favor, sign them by by saying aye.
Aye.
No, abstain? Motion carries. So this is a recommendation to council, so ultimately, they have the final decision, but our recommendation is approval, so good luck on your project. Next on the agenda is other business. Donovan?
Yeah, I will just inform the commission that we did receive another incomplete letter regarding the plan commission, regarding comprehensive plan from the Metropolitan Council. This one is much shorter than the last, and I'm sure that they have the information they already need, so I expect that to go to council in early August for, hopefully for final adoption of the comprehensive plan. Then begins the comprehensive rezoning. And we do have an agenda for the first, I'm sorry, for the second plan commission in July, so take your vacation. And that's it for me, I'm happy to take any questions from the commission.
Commissioner Young?
Donovan, do you have a plan or a schedule for the rezoning, like this article, this article, this article, so that we have a path forward that we can sort of understand and prepare for?
I haven't gotten to that level of planning for it. I put it, I put, you know, money in the 2020 budget for both city attorney review, city, you know, hours on it, as well as Bolton and Mink, you know, consulting assistance with that. That's as far as I've gone, as far as actually, you know, plotting that, that project out.
So you don't intend to start until 2020?
No, no, I just mean, that's, that's all I've done as far as the work toward that. I mean, you know, I was, I was actually answering a zoning question today and noting how, you know, there's, you know, I've been collecting, you know, items that relate to just things where, in this case, it was the authority of the plan commission to, you know, set conditions for approval, and the way the code currently reads, which was fine in, in 2008 when it was adopted, but was changed in 2014, where there's some issues like this evening with the CUPs, where the plan commission isn't simply recommending, they're actually making the final decision, so, tiny thing, but it's, technically, it's important, so there are a number of things like that that are, are kind of in the works.
Commissioner Batty?
So is there, on the same subject, is there a, has anybody made a list of all the things that we're going to, or at least general categories of things that are going to have to be addressed by, you know, you know, changes in ordinances and that sort of thing? I'm just curious, not having been through that process before, this process before, I'm just curious how structured that is, and how quickly it's gonna happen. I mean, is it something that's gonna take, you know, two, three, two, three months, six months, a year?
I can, I think it's taking over a year. I mean, one part of, I think, the city attorney is gonna want to get involved and be very detailed on some of these items. And for instance, there have been, in the past, there have been situations where CUPs have been issued, but it, within that zoning district, that land use is not listed as a conditional use. This also came up today in a conversation with the city attorney, so.
Oh, you mean in the change and the new?
Yeah, so we actually kind of legalize some of these, I mean, the CPs already exist to make them conform to the, or not, if it's, you know, if it's a community decision. But of course, the zoning map would have to be changed, and the list of, you know, basically aligning the future land use categories to the zoning districts, looking, again, reviewing, well, are these uses that we still want to have in those, being aware, of course, of, you know, nonconformities that could be created in this, in this process. There is, I think, the list of just statutory things that have changed, and just a lot of housekeeping.
So is that, is that your purvey? I mean, is this something that you, are you tasked with the responsibility of coming up with all these lists, and then categor, you know, prioritizing this, and then deciding what's gonna come before the plan commission and our city council or whoever has to, you know, have the final say on it?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, this, I mean, pardon the zoning code, of course, the plan commission and city council have a big piece, big role to play, but it's also why I'm enlisting, you know, the assistance of the city attorney and, you know, and Jane Concierge, who helped us with the, with the con-plan, to help, you know, get those details right, as well as people, I mean, Jane has done this process multiple times as well.
And I think that there's some things like, we have properties, at least that I'm aware of, that there's a, a primary residence, and the people who live there over time have put in a secondary residence on the property. Is that something that in the future, we want to encourage in the city, or allow? And, you know, that's, that's not in our zoning code right now. So is, there's some policy things in there, too, things like bed and breakfast, Airbnb, wind or sun rights on one property or another, are there some things that, you know what? As more and more people are looking at solar?
Oh, I know exactly what you're talking about. You know, I've, I've been to, you know, go to the planning commission meetings regularly, this, it comes up more and more all the time, and it's very real.
And, and those are some policy things that I am expecting that you're going to want to work through as we work through the new zoning code, correct?
Oh, correct. I mean, yeah, I mean, that's, that's one of, I mean, it was part of, for instance, the, if you recall during the workshop with, I'm forgetting the name, Minnesota.
Uli, Urban Land Institute.
Yes, thank you. You know, in that discussion around, like, multiple, you know, basically accessory dwelling units, I get inquiries at least two a month on, you know, on families who want to have, basically, you know, adult child living, you know, somewhere in close proximity, but not sharing, you know, not be in the same household for, you know, various reasons. So that's gonna be something that I think we'll wrestle with, as well as maybe tiny homes as well. I know that we, you know, it's been a discussion around some of the, you know, plan commission on having, you know, allowing smaller lot sizes with our basic, you know, residential, you know, single-family zoning. Yeah, a whole, a whole host of things, and, you know, I mean, I think we're trying to steer clear of some of the more hot, like, hot third rail issues, like signage or something like that, but I'm sure we'll wander into those to reflect, you know, changing needs, changing economics.
What about driverless cars and trucks? Are we gonna address that?
That's really not part of the zoning code, but.
It's, it's about to become a bigger and bigger part of our culture.
Yes, it is.
Most people don't believe that, but there's already driverless trucks on roads, so.
Karen, did you have any updates for us?
I do not.
Thank you. Councilmember Gerard and Laison?
Thank you. See, we couldn't go up and play at the strategic planning meeting tonight.
Well, good intro, Susan. You must be my straight person for tonight. If you haven't signed up for the strategic planning, if you want to be involved, you can send an email right to Karen there, and Karen will get you signed up. There's one more next Wednesday. If Wednesday doesn't work for you, which I know it does for all you guys, you can go online, and there is a survey or a questionnaire, I'm not exactly sure which it is. As you can tell, the parking lot's quite full today, so they did get a decent crowd to show up for it. I don't know what they're doing up there. If you haven't heard, the city council's banned from that meeting, you know, because we want the citizens' input, and we don't want to be the manager in the room and no one says anything.
You guys are so intimidating.
Yeah, I know, especially this Balkan Hulk, huh?
So why are you, why are you banned?
They just don't want the council in for the input sessions.
Well, I went out there for the first hour, because I got a, I got an invitation with an RSVP iffy.
So I encourage you, if you have the time, to please put your two cents in. We spent a lot of time and effort to get this all wrapped up pretty quick. Part of the rush is always budgetings around the corner for us, so we want to make sure that if there's something that you want to add into the budget, that we are able to do so. I will give you two comments on the, the next part, when you start doing the zoning ordinances. Where a lot of the minutia shows up, you'll read and read and read, because, especially where you've rezoned, or you've changed the zone slightly, because we want to line it up nowadays with, I think Broadway is an example, I believe there's a few zones down there, and they kind of got merged together, so that all the uses get included or excluded and conditional use, so there's all, and you get to read it all. It's all highlighted, it just, it'll keep you up at night.
So who does that for us?
I think a lot of it, this, it'll come to you done between Bolton Mink and Donovan and whatnot, at least a starter on that, because if we give, if you started with a blank page, nothing would get done. So they do their best to combine, and then you guys get to say of yea and nay on what stays, because it's the city zoning ordinance when it's all done, and then Bridget will review it, or one of the other lawyers, to make sure we don't get into legal trouble.
So are there gonna be, I mean, are there gonna be sessions where, where we just talk about that kind of stuff?
They, well, the last time we did it, I think they were kind of limited to no more than three hours at a crack, two to three hours, and they were typically on non-scheduled nights, so it wouldn't be a night like tonight, there'd be the second meeting, which you don't have, and it's gonna take a while, you know, because then you have to look at your overlay districts and some of the other, and how do we?
The reason I, I'm not trying to be difficult here, but the reason I was, you know, asking the question here is because I, I'm interested in this sort of thing, and I, but I, you know, I want to, because I haven't been through it, I don't know if anybody else here, well, Susan, I guess, but I don't know if anybody else has or not, but, you know, I'd like to get the jump on this. I don't want to come into a situation where we're just being hand, you know, handed this thing and hand-fed this thing, you know, and we get to look at these two or three little things and yea or nay on them. I, you know, I mean, there's some fairly, there's some major things that I think need to come down here that, you know, I, I don't sound power hungry here, but I want to have, you know, I want to have my say on it, you know, I want to have, want to make sure these things are covered and, and, and talked about, and so that's why I'm just kind, I'm, my curiosity is up here.
Yeah, it, we never had any problem discussing stuff, but you do have to move it along at a rate so that.
Right, well, that's why I'm wondering kind of about the structure, how this is gonna kind of be packaged and, and come to us and.
Wait, see?
Red lines, lots and lots of red lines.
Yeah. I have nothing else. I'd be happy to entertain any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any updates? I do have one. I wanted to say, the city, I think, did a phenomenal job celebrating our Independence Day, whether it was the parade, from the staff side, from the enjoyment, the fireworks were great, all of the various activities, and I wanted to note Commissioner Keen was at many of the fundraising activities I saw, and at the Legion, and played a leadership role, and so as one of our colleagues, I wanted to say, thanks, nice job.
Thank you.
Specifically to you, because you're on our board. If there's nothing else, we'll move towards adjournment?
Move adjournment?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. There's no discussion. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Noes? We're adjourned.